Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Sevier County Commission Meeting tonight. If you all would like to, please rise. We're going to recite the Lord's Prayer and we're also going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you so choose, you can join us. But before we do that, I'm going to have a moment of silence in honor of and the memory of Commissioner Chuck Godfrey, who passed away recently. And you see an empty chair up here, which recognizes how important he was to this commission and this county, and how much his absence will be felt. And we're glad to have his widow Melissa with us tonight. And we recognize the many contributions that Commissioner Godfrey gave to this county during his tenure and also his tenure as a firefighter and so many other things in the community. What I would like to do is have a moment of silence, memory, and then I'll lead us in the Lord's Prayer if you want to join me. And then we will conclude with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd join me in a moment of silence, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Commissioner Ratchely, would you lead us in the pledge?
I stand in the name of the republic, for which it stands, my nation, my rock, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the meeting of the Sevier County Board of Commissions, Commission to Order, and ask commissioners if you would please mark present on your screens. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the roll call?
Twenty-three present, one absent.
Thank you. We do have a quorum present tonight. We will begin the meeting with the first resolution we have. It's item number three on our agenda, which is Consideration of Proclamation 2024-03-01, which is to recognize Cindy Cameron Ogle and her service to Sevier County. Commissioners, you have that in your packet. And I will read that, and then we'll entertain a motion in a second concerning the proclamation. So the proclamation recognizing Cindy Cameron Ogle and her service to Sevier County. Whereas Cindy Cameron Ogle, a native of East Tennessee and a two-time graduate of University of Tennessee Knoxville, has dedicated over 50 years of her career to public service, with more than 45 years serving in Sevier County and in the city of Gatlinburg. And whereas Cindy Ogle began her public service in 1974, serving on the staff of Tennessee Congressman John Duncan, then returning to East Tennessee to serve as a state training officer with the Department of Head Start Training at the University of Tennessee Knoxville. Whereas in 1978, she joined the city of Gatlinburg as grants coordinator and was soon appointed, promoted rather, to Assistant City Manager within six months, where she served in that role for 10 years. After, whereas after dedicate, a decade of serving as Assistant City Manager, Cindy Ogle was appointed as the 11th City Manager of Gatlinburg on July 3rd, 1989, with 35 years of service of, as Gatlinburg City Manager. She holds the longest tenure as a City Manager in the history of Gatlinburg. Whereas Cindy Ogle has been honored to serve in numerous capacities, including service as a member of the University of Tennessee Masters of Public Administration and Public Policy Board, appointed by Governors Haslam and Bill Lee, to serve as the first congressional district on the Tennessee Arts Commission, having served as past Vice President and Member of the International City Management Association, a past President and Member of the Tennessee City Management Association Board of Directors, a past Member of the Tennessee Municipal League, and a past Member of the Tennessee Municipal League Risk Management Pool Board. Whereas she has achieved numerous accomplishments, including being named City Manager of the Year by the Tennessee City Management Association in 2002, a member of the Leadership Sevier Class of 1997, a finalist for the Young Women's Christian Association Tribute to Women Award in 2002, awarded the Senior Citizens Home Assistance Service Award in 2019, and winning the Xeno Wall Junior Tourism Award in 2022, among many others. Whereas on May 16th, 1992, Cindy was married to Larry Bud Ogle, and the two were married for 29 years, have two daughters Candace and Kelly, and eight grandchildren. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, and the Sevier County Commission do proclaim March 31st, 2024, as Cindy Cameron Ogle Day in Sevier County, to hereby express our appreciation for the efforts that Cindy has made in Sevier County. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring, it ring at 7:00 PM on this day to celebrate this occasion, ordered this 18th day of March, 2024. So, that is the proclamation, and we have a motion and a second to approve that proclamation. And do we have any discussion or questions concerning the proclamation? Any comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please bring Proclamation 2024-03-01 to the floor for action? I have a motion and a second. Seeing there is no further discussion or action on this item, Madam Clerk, please proceed to the vote. Commissioners, please cast your vote. Commissioner Ratchely's already tore his microphone up, and it just took him a minute. Okay. Okay, seeing that all the votes have been cast, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes for, yes votes. The proclamation has been passed unanimously, and I will ask Mrs. Ogle if she had joined me down front as I present her with this proclamation. Let me say that I have known Cindy ever since she came to Garrett for a year, I worked with her for these 45 years, and I don't know of anybody that's a more dedicated public servant and has done more for the interests of Gatlinburg and Sevier County than Cindy Ogle has done. She is an example of public service, and I'm proud to present this proclamation to her, and proud to call her a friend. The only problem is, my wife gets up every morning and makes a list of things for me to do, and I'm afraid that Cindy's going to make a list of things for me to do as well, as she's retired. But Cindy, on behalf of the citizens of this county, we want to say thank you for your service, and thank you for being an excellent City Manager and public servant in our area.
Thank you so much.
Uh huh, thank you.
I guess I would make one comment, or two, or three. Thank you all very much. It's been an honor and a privilege, and it is bittersweet, but I really do, I love Gatlinburg, I love this county, and I'm not going anywhere. I'll be around to tell Larry what to do when Terry doesn't have the list quite right. So, we'll, we'll be doing that. And so I appreciate Larry Waters greatly. He, he has, God has put him in my life in very important times of my life, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Sure, Commissioner Parton?
I was very fortunate to actually work as Mayor of Gatlinburg many years ago, and had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Cameron Ogle. She married, of course, Bud Ogle, one of my best friends I ever had in my life. And I want to say this, Cindy exemplifies being a professional. She is a wonderful, wonderful person, a Christian lady, but she is a better friend, and she's a wonderful person. And she's going to be Mrs. Galliver, because she had a vision for Galliver, and she's one of the main reasons that Galliver is where they are today. So I want to say personally, thank you Cindy.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we will now move to item number four, which is Consideration of Proclamation 2024-03-02, Recognizing Dr. Deborah Ann Klein for her service in Sevier County. Now proceed to that, and I'll ask the Clerk to please bring Proclamation 2024-03-02 to the floor for action to be taken. That has been accomplished, and... Okay, it has been brought to the floor. Now I'll ask the Commissioners, do we have a motion and a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, would you cast your votes? Okay, seeing all the votes have been cast, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes votes. Proclamation has been duly adopted, and I'll go ahead and read that proclamation to you all now. A proclamation recognizing Dr. Deborah Ann Klein and her service to Sevier County. Whereas Dr. Deborah Klein, a native of Sevier County and a graduate of Sevier County High School, class of 1972, has dedicated her career to education and enriching the lives of students in Sevier County and across the region. Whereas Dr. Klein devoted over 45 years to Sevier County Schools as teacher, principal, instructional supervisor, director, director of curriculum instruction, media spokesperson, and assistant superintendent. Whereas Dr. Klein has served as faculty member at both East Tennessee State University and Lincoln Memorial University throughout her career. She's received numerous awards and recognition at the state and national level, including Tennessee State Supervisor of the Year Award, Chair of the Tennessee Supervisor Study Council, President of the Tennessee Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development, the celebratory, Celebrate Literacy Award of the International Reading Association, and many more. Whereas the library at Northview Primary School was named the Dr. Deborah Ann Klein Library in 1982, and Dr. Klein was inducted into the Northview Primary School Hall of Fame in 2020. Whereas following retirement, Dr. Klein remains active in the community, as a member of Beach Springs Baptist Church, leadership Sevier, Kodak Eastern Star, Friends of the Kodak Library, Board of Directors, Sevier County Retired Teachers, member Delta, Kappa Gamma Member, and First Families of Tennessee Member. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, and the Sevier County Commission do proclaim March 19th, 2024, as Dr. Deborah Ann Klein Day in Sevier County, and express our appreciation for the many efforts that Dr. Klein has made to Sevier County. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring at 7:00 PM on this day to celebrate this occasion, ordered this 18th day of March, 2024. So, Dr. Klein, if you'll come down front. Hey, let me say, I have known Deborah Klein, let's see, I started teaching about 1975, that's when I first met her, but she was a lot younger than me, right?
That's right.
And she made a great decision in 1978 when I ran for office, she campaigned for me in Underwood School, so I've never forgotten that. But Dr. Klein has made a tremendous impact on this county and on its education system. And she has affected the lives in a positive way of literally thousands of students across this county, tens of thousands of students, because she has dedicated her life to education, and she has made a difference in this county. And I'm proud to call her my friend, and we have Stephanie Husky, who's the Director of Schools now, with us, and we appreciate Stephanie. Stephanie, you want to come up and say a word about... There's not many women in my life that say that. We also have members of the school board sitting back here. I see Charles Temple, and Mike Oakley, and John McClure, and I saw Mark Strange and Kevin Towne, and we're glad to have a school board with us. We've worked great with them, they're a great group of folks, and we appreciate them. But Stephanie, do you have anything?
Well, obviously, the impact is eternal, that Dr. Klein has given, not only to me, but also countless members of Sevier County, and parts unknown, probably, because kids have gone everywhere. So, we're just extremely proud of her, and we'll try our best to just continue with her legacy.
Thank you. You have the microphone.
Jack, I'm going to be brief. You know, it's truly been a blessing to work with the, with the school system and to serve the children and the teachers of this county. I thought a lot about this tonight, and one thing I want to say is that a great blessing that this county has, is that we've had a series of boards, school boards, county commissions, that have supported education. And in looking back over 45 years, I am so thankful for that. During 45 years, I worked for three different superintendents. I'm thankful for the work that's been done here over the years to bring our school system to the point that it's at now. And I'm thankful for you, and I just want to thank you for taking this time tonight to let me say that. And I wish you well in your work, and I wish this school system the very best. We've got wonderful children in this county, they are our greatest treasure, and we ought to respond to that greatest treasure with all of the commitment and dedication that we can have to make things better every single day of their lives. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Dr. Jack Parton, who during a lot of Deborah's tenure was our Superintendent and Director of Schools, and had the wisdom to keep you on board and to bring, and to bring you the positions in that, in the school superintendent's office that he did. So I know he's wanting to say something, so I'll...
Larry, thanks for saying that, I appreciate that. But I do want to say this, Dr. Klein, I've really been fortunate that, just so happened that two of my best friends have been honored, and I'm very fortunate for that. I see Deborah's family here with you, thank y'all for coming up to Cleveland, we appreciate that. But Dr. Klein, I want to tell you this, okay? You are the true linchpin of why Sevier County School System's curriculum is where it is today, because you always put children first. All things aside, she was always my barometer, where I'd get off the right side, I'm the left side, I'm the right side. She would always get me, she was the left side, I was the right side. And she would always keep me, let's stay focused on children, let's stay focused on children. And I want to say this, Dr. Klein, thank you so much, you are a true professional, again, a strong Christian lady, and one of my best friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Parton. Okay, we're down to item number five, and we're continuing to recognize special folks in Sevier County and their accomplishments. So, we will move to item five, which is Consideration of Proclamation 2024-03-03, to recognize Sevier County Junior High School Girls Basketball Team on winning the 2024 TMSAA Class AAA State Championship. And we have brought that to the screen, we have a motion and a second, and the proclamation recognizing... 102?
Yeah, it's not on the screen yet.
Okay, we've not moved the screen, I'm ahead of everybody. I don't know if you all have ever watched those old Cas Walker things, but they're great. On one of them, he said he had stayed up all night at a store, and he was far ahead of himself, he said it was Tuesday, but he thought it was Wednesday. If you've never watched those, those are great, I'm telling you. By the way, Cas Walker was born in Sevier County, I didn't know. Okay, we, a proclamation recognizing the Sevier County Junior High Girls Basketball Team. Whereas the Sevier County Junior High School Girls Basketball Team recently completed a historical year, and whereas in their first year as a program, and in their inaugural season, they finished the season with a record of 27-2, where West Valley Holiday Classic Champions, Area Two Regular Season Champions, Area Two Tournament Champions, Section One Tournament Champions, and TMSAA Class AAA State Champions. And we have all the members here tonight, we have the Principal, Dr. Stenit, Athletic Director Hopkins, we have Assistant Coach Kendra Price, and Head Coach PJ Burden with us. And they, not only did the students display exceptional sportsmanship, maturity, and perseverance, but the coaches as well. So now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County, and Sevier County Commission do proclaim and honor and congratulate the outstanding accomplishment efforts and triumphs of the Sevier County Junior High School Girls Basketball Team on a job well done, is proclaimed this 18th day of March, 2024. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring at 7:05 PM on this day to celebrate this accomplishment. Now, I think we have moved to the screen, and we have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation. Do we have any discussion concerning the proclamation? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please proceed to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change of vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes votes. The proclamation has been passed unanimously, and now I get to present those young ladies with the... So, somebody earlier, we just picked them down the stairs, and somebody earlier said, Mayor, why don't you get down on your feet, and they'd be behind you, and they would take the entire girls team, and they're on the other side, and I got down on my knees. But I wanted to congratulate these young ladies, and their coaches, and the principal, and their parents as well. It takes a lot of dedication to win in sports, and it takes a whole lot of dedication and a whole lot of skill and a whole lot of effort to win a state championship. And these girls have accomplished something not many people accomplish, not just in Sevier County, but in, across the state of Tennessee, and it's something that they'll remember forever, and I wanted them to know tonight, it's something that the people of Sevier County appreciate, because we appreciate what they've done, they represent Sevier County in a great tradition, and every citizen all across this county recognizes how important their championship was bringing back to our areas. Thank you, girls, and I don't know if you want to say anything else.
Well, I'll be brief, because I know you've got busy things to do. It, you mentioned it, but it takes a lot of cooperation, I own, from the players, the parents, and, you know, we had a lot of support from the community, the school system, the administration, so we couldn't do it without everyone, and so I'm thankful for the opportunity, thank you for the girls, and we made it happen, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. As I said earlier, it's fortunate when we get a night and we can start off a commission meeting doing what we're doing tonight, and that is honoring two very special ladies, meant a lot to this county, as well as honoring a couple of teams that have been involved in championship efforts in the state of Tennessee, and letting all of these folks know how much the citizens of Sevier County appreciate what they've done for Sevier County. So having said that, we're going to move to item number four on the screen, and if we could proceed to bring item 2024-03-04 to the floor for any action. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any discussion? I'm on the Pigeon Ford's High School Wrestling Team. You're right, I'm, you, thank you Commissioner Hurst for correcting me, I'm backing up. I appreciate, that is item number six. Okay. Yeah, let, let me read this proclamation before, on item number six. Let me read it. A proclamation recognizing the Pigeon Ford's High School Wrestling Team for making the 2024 T double S double A Class A-aa State Tournament. Whereas the Pigeon Ford's High School Wrestling Team recently completed a historical year, whereas they finished the season with a record of 30-15, were the 2024 Regional Duel Champions, the 2024 Sectional Duel 30-15, were the 2024 Regional Duel Champions, the 2024 Sectional Duel Champions, the 2024 Traditional Champions with seven individual state qualifier qualifiers, finished fourth place in the 2024 TSSAA-A-AA State Duels, and fourth place in the TSSAA-A-AA Traditional, whereas the team had five individual state medalists, including Lucas Pratt in fifth place at 138 pounds, Max Cable in third place at 144, Aiden Hood in third place at 150, Jaden Howard in third place at 175, and Wyatt Howard finished as a state runner-up at 165. And whereas all of the team members that are present here, as well as their coaches, Dewayne Cable, Todd Howard, Mitchell Breeden, and Greg Foreman displayed exceptional sportsmanship, maturity, and perseverance. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County, and the Sevier County Commission do proclaim that we honor and congratulate the outstanding accomplishments, efforts, and triumphs of Pigeon Forge High School Wrestling Team on a job well done, proclaimed this 18th day of March 2024. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring a ring at 7:15 on this day to celebrate this accomplishment. Okay, does anyone have any discussion concerning the proclamation that is before you? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Proclamation has been duly passed. Now, if these young men and coaches would join me down front, we will...
You accomplished a lot, like saying you went to the state, and you showed a lot of grit, and a lot of dedication in what you did in the state, and what you did during the years. So we thank you for that. The citizens thank you for that. As I said earlier, you know how hard it works, and what kind of dedication you took to get there. So we appreciate you all. And I present this to Coach here, and he stands by his side in the corner, and I don't know if you want to say something or not, but you're welcome.
Just thank you, Larry, for everything that you all do, and what you do for us, and as I said, we would nowhere be near where we're at here without the community support, the coaches, the parents, the administrators. I mean, like I said, it takes, it takes a village to get to this point right here, and we just thank everybody, for all of their support, everything they do. Thank you all.
Okay. of the minutes from the previous meeting. You all have already received those, and so I will ask the clerk to please bring that item number seven to the floor for action to be taken. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, please announce the vote.
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes votes. Minutes have been approved. Now to the consideration of approving reports from commission committees, which is item number eight. You also have those reports in your package. Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? We have a motion and a second for approval of the commission minutes. Commissioners, cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, please announce the vote.
Twenty-three yes votes.
Reports of commission committees have been adopted. We'll now move to item number nine. Item number nine is consideration of reports of officials, divisions, and departments. You have those, you should have received all of those in the mail. There are a number of departments, as you can see, of Sevier County. For purposes of discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the reports of the officials, divisions, and departments when we advance to the voting screen. We have not done that yet. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change a vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes votes. Now, this was subject to any questions that you might have concerning any of the reports. So if, does anyone have any questions or comments concerning the reports as presented?
Mr. Mayor, is...
Mr. Hurst.
...for maybe an update on our short-term garbage planning, or maybe an update on the internet?
Okay, we can do that. We'll begin, I guess, with Mr. Temple. Is Andrew here? And before he gets up, I haven't had a chance to talk with Andrew today, but I did get a call from Comcast, which Comcast says they're going to apply for the entire county as well. So just as you give that update, keep in mind that Comcast has said today they're applying to put it in the entire county. So I'll let you proceed with what's going on.
Yes, sir. So the Charter and Comcast, the mayor said we've spoken with both of those entities, and there's a new, new opportunity that they're going to be, it's called the BEAD program. So with that, they're going to be able to come into Sevier County, and they will be able to apply hopefully sometime in the next few weeks. They will apply for that for all of Sevier County. They will apply, and then they will go out, and it's a three-year process as they're, as they go out into the community, and it's our underserved areas that currently do not have, have internet. So the way you might look at it, back in the day, if you had one side of the street maybe was Comcast, and maybe another side of the street was Charter, they would never, never overlap. But that's not necessarily the way it's going to be, be now moving forward. They will be able to go basically anywhere that they can go to, and they're going to continue to do that over the next, next three years. For instance, I think I've got the number right here of how many miles they have gone, gone into over the last, last few months. Commissioner Hurst, I apologize, I don't see that number right here, right here in front of me. But they've gone, it's about 1,100 miles, or 100 and 111 miles, excuse me, into the community over the last year, year and a half, and they're going to continue, continue to do that.
And let me say, we're, one of the things that had concerned us was the definition the federal government was using about areas being served. And I think they, one thing they changed is if anybody, they went by census blocks.
Yes, sir.
Anybody in that census block had broadband access, they assumed everybody in that block had it, whether they did or not. They have since changed that. They are not doing that.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And now we're working to get them to change, you know, they, they have said that some 90% of the county is provided with broadband service, and that's not accurate. What they're using is this satellite service, which is not, in a lot of places, is not adequate to have broadband. So hopefully they're going to change that definition to a more realistic, more realistic definition than they presently have, so that that will be expanded. But it was good news that both Comcast and Charter and AT are all applying for these grants this summer, and they're each applying to put it throughout the county. And they'll, somebody will get awarded that grant this summer or fall, and then they will start immediately moving forward with putting broadband into the county, is what we were told.
Yes, sir.
So, let's just say Charter, then what would happen if Comcast, a section they were to have, but they still...
So if, for instance, if you already have Comcast, then you're welcome to stay with Comcast. If you want to switch over to Charter, you would be able to, I'm sure there's something with your, your individual contract with that. They'll be able to cross. Yes, sir. I guess it's, yeah, they'll be able to, you could look at it like cell phones, almost in a, in a way. Yes, sir, thank you. Anybody else?
So your projection is have broadband all over the county in three good periods?
Within the next three years, yes, sir. And if they don't, there is a significant payback that those companies have to give back to the federal government. I believe it's about a 30% payback of, of their full amount that they were awarded. They have to give the full amount back plus 30%.
No pressure to put it in there.
Yes, yes, sir. So it's not like they're going to get it, they're just going to sit on it. They have, you know, they have, they'll have that duty to put it in, and then there's a financial backing from it as well.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, that's, that's a significant point. They do have a, if they don't put it in within three years, they do have a penalty. So they're, they're on, once they're awarded, awarded this grant, they're on the clock, so to speak, to put it in. And that was good news, the first good news we've really had in this whole process. Hopefully we can move forward with that. Next was our short-term rental. Now, you want the report, the solid waste report, that's you, Matt?
Well, the good news is, is Blaylock started construction on Centerview on March the 4th. The bid documents stated that they had 85 days to complete that project. The highway department will do the paving for us, so as soon as Blaylocks is out, the highway department will come in and finish up that project. So that one's moving along. I've been checking on it every Friday, and they've made some pretty good progress so far. Actually saw Commissioner Watts last time I was out there, so pretty pleased with their progress so far. Obviously, we're also updating other convenience centers throughout our system. Allensville has made some solid progress and should be closing that project out here pretty soon. We have Pigeon Forge, where we should be about ready to get things going there. Already have all the equipment on our side in, so just ready to finish those projects out, and keep that moving. But send, that's the progress on Centerview, if that answers your question.
You're going to be set up to take pay at the sites, or is that, now is that the way that, I'm talking about the short-term rental garbage now, is what I'm talking about?
Yes, and we'll also have a software system, Waste Works, that we will have at those sites. We'll have cameras at the sites as well to monitor payment, provide some internal controls there. So we do have that set up and ready to go.
So what type of payments will you be able to receive?
We're slated to take credit card, debit card, cash, is what that system will allow.
Hearing none, we've already announced this vote, so we will now move on to item number 10, which is public comment on agenda items first. And we did not have any request of public comment on agenda items, so we will move to B under item 10, which is public hearing on zoning items. We have three zoning items on the agenda tonight, and first is Little Cove Road, second one is 2640 Douglas Dam Road, third is Newport Highway. So we have those. And I assume that this fourth resolution, we'll open the floor for any public comment on, which is a consideration which would be amending our zoning resolution. We probably need to do that as well, right?
Yes.
Mr. Temple. So if you are here and want to comment on any four of those items, we will recognize you. If you will just step to the podium and please state your name, and you will have three minutes to comment to the commission on any one of those four items that, that will be coming up. Anyone in the audience like to comment on those zoning requests, or the amended requests? It's obviously time for Bonanza to come on.
Always been a Bonanza fan.
No, no. I like, I like the theme song from Bonanza. Okay. Seeing no one requesting that, we'll close in the public hearing portion and move to item number 11, which is, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? And item number 11 is Resolution 2024-0301, amending zoning resolution for Sevier County by rezoning tax map 114, parcel 70.02, from A1 agricultural to R1 rural residential. We have a motion and a second to approve it. Now, do we have discussion or questions concerning resolution? Any comments, Mr. Temple?
No, sir.
As our planner, no comments unless there's questions. Hearing no questions, Madam Clerk... Hearing no questions, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no requests to change your vote, Madam Clerk, please announce the vote.
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. Next is item number twelve, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-two, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map zero-one-eight, parcels twenty-three point oh, twenty-four point three-eight and twenty-six point oh from R-one rural residential to C-two general commercial. Uh, that has been recommended by the Sevier County Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen for twenty-four oh-three oh-two? We have a motion in second to approve. Do we have any discussion or questions? Again, Mr. Temple, any comment from the planning office?
Mr. Love, sir.
Any questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Did anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no requests to change your vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. Item number thirteen, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-three, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map forty-one, parcels twenty-nine point oh-two and twenty-nine point oh-four from R-one rural residential district and C-two general commercial district to G, C-two general commercial district. That has also been recommended by the planning commission. Madam Clerk, if you would please advance to the voting screen on twenty-two-four oh-three oh-three. It has been motioned in second to approve. Do we have any questions? Excuse me, any comment, Mr. Temple?
No, sir.
No comment from the planning office? Any question from the commission? Hearing no question from the commission, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Twenty-three, yes votes. Resolution been properly adopted. We are now on item fourteen, which is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-four, uh, which, uh, concerns Sevier County, uh, planning commission recommendation and we also had to get planning, uh, commission recommendation from Pigeon Forge and Sevierville, which we did. They all voted for and I'm going to recognize our planner, um, Mr. Temple to come forward. And while he is, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen on Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-four? And, Mr. Temple, you can, uh, explain what's going on with this resolution.
Commissioner, thank you. Um, this resolution is to ba, basically fix a technical error that was made in our department over the last few years where we failed to take some amendments to our zoning resolutions to the Pigeon Forge and Sevierville Planning Commissions as required, uh, by the law. Uh, we did, they weren't done. They were all brought back here over the last few years. You all approved them. We just didn't get that recommendation for from Sevierville and Pigeon Forge. Uh, I took these, we collected all of those and identified the, so, about five amendments that were done that weren't taken. Uh, I've, I went to Sevierville, talked to them, I had a workshop at Pigeon Forge. They're made aware of it. There's really nothing new in the resolution you're approving tonight. It's just dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's and everything is the way it's supposed to be. There's no new changes in it, it's the way it was yesterday and today. Uh, it'll, but tonight, when this is passed, it will be, we'll have all the, all the i's dotted, t's crossed.
Questions to Mr. Temple?
And I will be going back to the two commissions, uh, in the future. In fact, we've got another one coming later that's already on the agenda at Pigeon Forge and Sevierville to, with some other minor changes to come to you probably next month.
Is this on the individual properties that you're?
This is, we're, we're just, we're amending the entire book, the, the zoning resolution, the entire document, what was on, in your, you had a copy of it, it's the entire document. It's, this is not a rezoning, this is amending the, the actual zoning resolution.
Which, as you said, is pretty much just restating what's already in there.
Yes, sir, there's no new change, no, no, nothing's changed from what the regulations are today. This just dots all the i's and crosses all the t's and, uh, the way it should have been.
Other questions? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Temple.
You're welcome, thank you.
Madam Clerk, you have advanced to the voting screen. Commissioners, I ask that you cast your votes. Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We're down to item number fifteen, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-five to confirm the appointment of the county medical examiner. Madam Clerk, would you please bring Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-five to the floor for any action to be taken? Have, and we have a motion in second to approve and this is a procedural thing, you, if, if you see in your resolution, we are reappointing, uh, Dr. Jerry Bradley, who is presently the medical examiner, and Dr. Vincent Tully, who is the assistant medical examiner, uh, to their positions, which the term would expire now at March thirty-first of twenty-two-nine. Any questions? Uh, for law, I'm recommending those two through the commission to be confirmed. Hearing no questions, Madam Clerk, you have advanced to the voting screen. Commissioners, would you please adopt, excuse me, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Resolution's been adopted. We are now down to item number sixteen, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-six, which is to authorize and execute an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for Waterline Extension Pro, uh, Projects. Uh, this authorizes, uh, me as county mayor to sign these grant applications and commits us to, uh, the local match on these and we have, uh, some projects approved by, uh, the water committee that, uh, are, uh, we are going to apply for. And I don't know, Commissioner Hirsch, do you want to tell them the projects that, that the water committee is chair, that committee, the water committee has indicated they want us to apply for?
Yeah, this is one that, uh, grant that we've applied for many times and has a pretty, uh, extensive, uh, uh, for, it's a lot of your low-income housing places and, and that type, we've about run out of places, but where this, where this project will be, if it's, if we get it approved, will be out, uh, off of Kerr Road out, uh, near the Douglas Lake. And, uh, it's, uh, we've been, it's been a bid basically five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, but this one is, if I've got it right, is a thousand dollars. I mean, uh, yeah, about, uh, a, a million dollars instead of five hundred, they went up. If we get it, then that will free up some money that we have from, from the federal grants that we've got, uh, to do some other projects. This is one that we was going to do under the federal money and, uh, we can get this, we can do it and free up some of the money off that federal money to do some others with.
Commissioner Hirsch, we have other questions or comments from the commission concerning this resolution. Again, this authorizes the county mayor to sign the appropriate documents and submit the application for a CDBG grant. Any questions? If not, we have advanced the gro, the voting, uh, screen. Commissioners, would you cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We are now down to item number seventeen, which is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-seven to request balance of accounts remitted to the state treasure, treasure under Unclaimed Property Act. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please, uh, advance the screen to Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-seven? I don't know who wants to explain this, is, uh, Brooke here, our finance director, she may want to come forward. Thank you, the baker, you can explain this.
This is the unclaimed balance from twenty-twenty-two that we, uh, sent to the state. They have told it for eighteen months and then now we're able to request back anything that's still been unclaimed. So these are just checks out of our office that somebody never cashed or turned in.
Question from the commission, thank you. If not, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Twenty-three, yes votes. The, uh, resolution's been properly adopted. We are now on item number eighteen, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-eight, which is, which is to adopt a fee schedule update for the Department Environmental Health Services. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please advance the voting screen to Resolution twenty-two-three oh-three oh-eight? And in the process, I'm going to, uh, recognize, if he's here, Mr. Love Day. The head of our environmental health department.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate your all's time in this matter. Probably over the last eighteen to twenty-four months, um, with the amount of systems that the county has seen being installed, we've noticed a really sharp increase on, uh, failures of those, uh, inspections where we're having to go back out two and three times to get them to correct them so they can be right. Obviously, that's created a domino effect for us, not being able to go to other people's properties, having to go back to these inspections. Uh, we feel like this, uh, new fee of a hundred dollars for the inspection, the reinspection fee, we'll try and sort of rein that back in for some of these, uh, installers. Um, it's a fee that the state adopted in two thousand eight, so any installer that's in Cock County, uh, Hamlin County, places like that, they're subject to this and have been for years. So, um, you know, that's, that's what we're, uh, asking at this time.
Questions from the commission?
Is that the only new fee, the reinspection?
Yes, yes. Everything else is the same.
Other question? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Twenty-three, yes votes. We are now down to item number nineteen, which is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-nine. Madam Clerk, would you please advance the voting screen to Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three oh-nine, which to, uh, is to adopt the International Energy Code, uh, the twenty-eighteen edition. I now recognize the head of our buildings department, Mr. Jenkins, if you would explain this resolution.
So we had already adopted the twenty-eighteen energy code. The state during our audit didn't like the way that, and I'll own it, I worded the energy code exemptions to match our residential book. So they've asked me to mirror, word for word, how the state did it. So this is just changing language of the code that we've already adopted, how we've already been enforcing it to match the state fire marshal's language in their amending of that code. Again, we've already enforced it this way, they just didn't like how it was language, so they've asked me to bring this to get it fixed. Um, this is, we've, we've, the ninety-day waiting period for public notice is, is, is up now and that's why I'm back. So these books have been in the clerk's office for a period of over ninety days for public viewing and now that's expired and now we can bring it to vote. Again, no new rules, it's just fixing some language to make the state, uh, fire marshal's auditor happy.
Questions from members of the commission concerning the resolution? Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Hearing no questions, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Any commissioner like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Resolution properly adopted. We're now down to resolution number twenty. It is Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three ten, which is to set certain speed limits on Sevier County roads. Madam Clerk, would you please advance the voting screen to Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three dash ten? Resolution was recommended by the, um, Transportation Committee. You see those listed? All of them are twenty-five miles per hour, Thunder Mountain Road, Rainbow Falls Lane, Cloudview Drive, Red Sky Drive, Lightning Strike Drive, Cloud Burst Drive, uh, Ormbringer Drive, Clear Creek Road, Stony Brook Trail, Cedar's Creek Circle, Engle Town Road and Villa Drive. Those are the ones recommended by the Transportation Committee. We have a motion in second to approve those. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission concerning those speed limits? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three, yes votes.
Twenty-three, yes votes. Resolution's been properly adopted. We are now on item number twenty, which is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three, that should be, uh, dash eleven, which is, uh, resolution to authorize the use of state aid in resurfacing roads. Madam Clerk, if you would please advance the screen to Resolution twenty-two-four oh-three dash eleven. We have a motion in second to approve it and I'll recognize our highway superintendent, Mr. Smouser, if he wants to come up and tell the commission about his request.
Thank you all. This is something that's required by the state of Tennessee statewide. When state funds, such as state aid funds are used, uh, the commission has to approve those. This is for resurfacing, uh, Goose Gap Road, uh, from the city limits of Pigeon Forge over to the White's community.
Questions to Mr. Smouser?
Thank you all.
Ah, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Ah. A. Here we come. We're gonna fix it right now. You're just trying to follow in Commissioner Ashley's footsteps, he blew up his microphone. Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We're down to item number twenty-two, which is consideration of Resolution 2024-03-12, a resolution to classify county roads for the severe county road system. Madam Clerk, would you please advance the voting screen to Resolution 2024-03-12? And we have a motion and a second. Any comments, Mr. Smouser, about this resolution?
Not unless you have questions.
Any questions of Mr. Smouser concerning the resolution? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We're down to item number twenty-three, which is notaries, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We have a hundred and six notaries. I believe that's a record.
A hundred and six notaries? You have a list of those? Madam Clerk, you have advanced to that voting screen. We have a motion and a second to approve the notaries. Would anyone like to ask a question concerning the, concerning the notaries? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes votes. Notaries are approved. We're down to other business. I have one item that I just want to recognize someone here. Mr. Reed Bull. Reed, raise your hand. Reed is doing an internship with Sevier County now. He's a young man, it's a senior, and from Seymour, and we're glad to have him. And join me in welcoming Reed. Okay, that, do we have any other business?
Will he be old enough to run when you retire?
I, I'm not gonna comment on that. Okay, now we're down to...
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like for you to put a work order in and get my microphone fixed, please.
We're, we're gonna get it fixed. We didn't purposely shut your microphone off. Let me just say that, although it might have been a good idea, but... Uh, we are down now to public comment on non-agenda items, and we had two requests. And I'll start with the, the first one we got was of Mr. Jay Martin. Is he here tonight? I don't believe he's here. We tried to contact him again, and he wasn't, uh, did not answer, so I don't believe he is here. And next, we have Mr. Jerry Grubb, who is wanting to talk about short-term rentals and the fire department funding. So, Mr. Grubb, I can now, you...
I don't think it's any, any use of me opening up this briefcase because I don't have three minutes. There's no way that you can talk about this stuff in three minutes, so I'll give it my best shot. Let's start with the short-term rentals. Is that what was on the agenda?
Yes.
The agenda, not the fire department?
Sure, both of them were on there, yes.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the short-term rental, when I heard about it, I was not clear of what happened, how it came about. I went to a meeting in December, and I listened to a presentation that the short-term rental was going, inspection program was gonna be implemented on the people of Sevier County, as well as the other investors. Attended the meeting. I wasn't real happy with what I heard. I wasn't sure what I heard. So my next step, when I got back, I called one of my county commissioners. My county commissioner told me that the county commissioner didn't have anything to do with this, that this was the fire department. The fire department is trying to raise money to make a fire department, uh, fund a fire department. Well, that sounded pretty strange. So I went further investigation. I just wasn't happy with what I was hearing. And while, and, and let me make it clear. I'm not against the fire department at all. I'll pay that fire department my fair share and more. But the way this thing was rolled out, I'm very concerned about it. So my next step was to go to other commissioners. So I'll go to my commissioner, Mr. Ronnie Allen, over here. "Mr. Ronnie, I need to meet with you." "Well, I'm busy." "Well, I can meet you at the store." "Mr. Allen lives at the end of my street." "Well, I'm busy. We can't talk on the phone. We have nothing to talk about." When I said, "Well, I want to talk to you about the short-term rentals and other things," his response was, "Oh, you one's got a short-term rental. I don't have one, so it doesn't concern me." And that made, that made me pretty PO'd. Then he started shouting at me, "Larry Waters, Larry Waters, call Larry Waters. He's the one running the show." "No, I don't need to talk to Larry Waters. I need to talk to my congressman of the county, my commissioner, the legislative body, to get some answers." Couldn't do it. I tried other commissioners. Some of them talked to me. Others were very apprehensive. The rest of it, you call the phone number, you get a voicemail, the phone's not answering the phone, leave a voicemail to return the call, can't get a returned call. So I was pretty much at a dead end on that. I was trying to figure out this short-term income, rental, inspection, it's actually a tax. So I pursued it to find out what was going on. And all the commissioners I was able to talk to told me that we're, we need to make money for the fire department. Well, either we have a short-term rental tax, or we have money for the fire department. I support, I support giving that money. I'm not happy the way the short-term rental thing was put up. I have a short-term rental, by the way. Three hundred and twenty square feet, the size of that corner. I'm taxed two hundred and fifty dollars, when the guy down the street from me, the big investor from Florida, got a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, sleeping twelve people. And he's taxed two hundred and fifty dollars. But it's the way the thing has been rolled out. If we need a fire department, we need to get a fire department. And there's ways of doing it. So I can't speak to my representative. I get three minutes here, zero. I get three minutes here. I can't speak to my legislative body here. I can't speak to my county commissioner anywhere else. So how do we discuss this? How is this gonna be better? The commissioners just say, "Oh, wait a minute. I know what's good for you. You don't, no, you don't need, you don't need to come here." Well, the people in this, in this county rely on their income from their short-term rentals. They're getting taxed. And I don't want to pay another dime tax to anybody for anything. But they're getting taxed. So the short-term rental is nothing but a knee-jerk, nilly-willy, let's make money. So if we go back to the, if we go back to the fire department issue, where we make the money? It's very simple. We can create a fire department. We can create funding for the fire department. I got it right here in, in my briefcase. Some of y'all may, may know about it. What they call the Tennessee, uh, Tennessee Fire Handbook, Fire Department Handbook. Has anybody heard of that? So in the Fire Handbook, it lays it out very clear how you are supposed to operate a fire department. It starts off, the first few pages, a feasibility study. The second thing is a plan. They don't have a plan. And the third thing is funding. It tells you everything you need to know about a fire department and how to implement it. It don't tell you how to make a specialty tax to make money. It tells you how to create a fire department. This commission adopted it in 1984, and nobody's going back. Nobody even knows why, I wouldn't think. So I'm wondering, how much money is this thing gonna generate? Well, what I'm figuring, a million and a half dollars? That's not, that's not a lot of money. So I went for, I went so far as to go into the open record. And I got the, uh... I got figures of how much money the short-term rentals are making and on forty percent property tax. Open records come back, Sevier County Finance, uh, no such record exists. All these rental cabins taxed at forty percent. I'd like to know where that money's at. The mon, the hotel motel lodging tax, we paying three percent. It comes back in collected seventeen million, seven hundred and fifty-nine, uh, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, eight hundred and nine, seventeen million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents. State law says that that money must be used for tourism purposes. Well, if we're concerned about the safety of these tourists, looks to me like this eighteen million dollars should be sent protecting the tourists. What are we, what are we buying for the tourists? I don't see no roads. I don't see no water lines. I don't see no sewer lines. I see these million, trillion-dollar investors coming in here, and people that works in this county and, and live in this county and built this infrastructure are, have to keep up with those guys. The people in this county need to be exempted. There need to be impact fees put on all these big corporations coming in here, making all this money, and they are making a buttload. And, and of course, we get, we get a pretty chunk. Where is this, uh, uh, forty percent property tax? If we made seventeen million on three percent, what are we making on forty percent? So this county does not have a plan. No kind of plan. And it's just tax, tax, tax. We got a lot of money coming in. There's other options. We can't talk about it. We can't talk about it here. We can't talk about it down at the store. We can't talk about it. If I call you guys boys up, nah, we, you know, I ain't calling him.
If you would, Mr. Grubb, please wind it up. It's way past three minutes.
I know. I know. But, Mr. Mayor, do you recall in 2016 when we had the wildfires? And I stood up here probably for thirty minutes defending the county? My three minutes was up at that time, right? I felt it was important to step up here and step up the plate. I don't see any difference right now. I understand the three minutes are up, but it's important stuff. I'll just deal with my three minutes and let, let everybody else talk. After what I say and what I hear, I think somebody needs to come up with a plan. My commissioners need to work for me. My commissioners.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. All in favor of adjourning, please rise. We're adjourned. Thank you.